Recording in progress. This is a remotely conducted hybrid open meeting. Public participation guidelines. We are using Zoom for this meeting. Zoom has the capability to allow the public to participate in the meeting as an attendee. The chair can request that members of the public provide their names for purposes of keeping accurate minutes for the meeting. Attendees must register to participate.
Thank you.
The registration link is unique to this meeting. The registration link can be found in the description of the Nantucket Government TV YouTube one feature meeting. Attendees will join and listen. Chair will call out. Are they panelists, right? The other people are panelists?
Yes.
Okay, panelists. Um, I can call, I will call on those of you who have raised your hands in the order they were raised. All questions should be directed through the chair. As a preliminary matter, my name is Susan McCarthy, and I serve as the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. May I make it confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present in the meeting? Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lisa Botticelli, Vice Chair. You're Lisa Allen, Clerk.
Aye.
Michael Manner, Member.
Here.
Mark For, Alternate Number. Yeah. And Jim on Danny, Alternate Number.
Here, but a point of order. I am a sitting member for Surfside Crossing. And not an alternate.
I don't think that's correct, actually, because you're an alternate member. That's what you're appointed as. You may have voted on that application because you were needed to, because we had two members and three, was it two, three, I remember, three members and two alternates that were done that way.
Well, for the record, as a voting member, I am a member of the ZBA on this particular case.
I, I think you're splitting hairs, but okay. I don't think that matters. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Leslie Snell, Deputy Director of Planning, Make the Sheriff, Minister of Specialists. Sarah Williams, Land Use Specialist.
Here.
George Pucci, Esquire, KP Law, Town Council.
Present.
And John Rusher, here. Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. John Cheshire, Cheshire Engineering.
Here.
See you. And Don Bracken, Bracken Engineering.
Yeah.
Oh, and I have some.
Yeah.
Good morning. This open meeting of the Town of Nantucket Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Appeals is convening in person and via video conference via the Zoom app as posted on the town website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Some attendees are participating by video conference. Be aware that other attendees and viewers may be able to see you. Do not screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I know otherwise. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, I may need to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line with members inviting each one of you to provide any comment, question, or motion. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to meet your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. And for any response, please wait until you have taken your name before speaking. If members of the meeting are in conversation with other members, please be so clear in taking care of that itself. Each vote in this meeting will be conducted by roll call votes. And I just want to know, I went back and watched the meeting last week after the meeting. And, um, we, we need to be really much better about the way that we interact for minutes, because I can't imagine how difficult that was for you. So you will do our best today to say our name, be thoughtful about when we start speaking, and, and please try to go through me so that it gives, there is that time for Nikki to switch gears and do the minutes. And I apologize. Okay. So now I'm going to call to order this special meeting of the zoning board appeals on this Thursday, May 18th at 11:20 a.m. And so call to order, would someone make a motion to approve the agenda as drafted? Okay, so John makes that motion, and Michael seconds. So your roll call, John.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
myself. Aye, sorry. And Lisa.
Aye.
Every time. Um, okay, and there are no minutes to approve. So the first item on our agenda is the Surfside Crossing final site and engineering review and review of the conditions. I mean, just before we get start back on the conditions. The extension that we requested at the end of last meeting was granted to June 28th of next month for us to finish this final site plan and engineering review and review of conditions.
Madam Chair, I ask, when are we going to get final plans on all this? It can't be the 27th. It can't be June 26th.
No, I think, I think last week, I think, Don, maybe you guys said it would take like two weeks.
Yeah, we're actually. We're trying to get them at least PDF set by the end of the day tomorrow to address this round of comments.
Sure.
There'll probably be some additional comments after this set, so probably one more revision, but hopefully that's just minor stuff that at least discussing.
So that'll go to John Chesky right away.
And we did submit last night the updated landscape plans. You'll have hopefully time to review before the next meeting, and I think addresses a lot of the comments that we've been talking about.
We don't have those in front of us now, though.
I think you have reduced that.
No. But I don't know. I mean, I'd like to update to review them.
So guys, what did I, I just said that I would like to not have conversation, but we're trying to go to meetings. Nikki's going to do the minutes, and it gets very confusing. There's a lot of people.
For you, Ben Sher, I just think it'd be nice to get things in advance for the meeting if we're going to be discussing it. So I assume today we won't discuss the landscape plans, and maybe we'll just.
I think we got through all the way to 118, and I feel, I think that the landscape. There are two. Yes, so there's 16 apps, and then there was another one that we, and then 20E, I think it was. So those we had already gone here, so we can do those after. Let's, I think we should start at 119. Or maybe actually, Don, can I ask you, did you and, did you and John Cheshire talk about the condition 118, which is about the full profile data and the subdivision that we kind of ended this discussion with last year?
We didn't talk about it because we decided to just go ahead and do it. So we've already been working on it. You'll have those plans hopefully by the end of the day.
All right, and I'm going to just give that one a big old. Okay, so then moving on to Chair, I went up to number 97. Did I miss? 97 and then 118.
And then 118, yeah, got it, got it.
Yeah, 118 was one that had. Okay, so, so going forward, the I thought the conditions that I had saw that had open, there are open items or things we want to discuss or get a status update for moving forward, or 123, 139, and 140, and then half conditions they added on number three on page 42. Did anyone have any ones, any conditions that we wanted to discuss in addition to that? 41, did we talk about that? Because this one's been addressed. They met, it's at 50 PSI. They did a loop around, like a loop system, so that one has been.
Where was that?
Let me look at my department review folder. Yeah, they're just in the practice, and one of them, I just pulled off, I just pulled us from the emails. Page 41, it was from last week's, I think, and just 49, 43, and then waiting emails from.
So, so, so the announcement will be as like a succession plan?
I'm sorry, what's, sorry, who am I speaking? Uh, Jason, mute. Okay, go ahead. Um, so let's see, we have the water department confirmed PSI. What page is that? I don't have, I don't think I have it on a page. I need to get that in writing. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we don't have it in writing.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, like, it is confirmed for water. We're just waiting on.
Three, it was hard when something's confirmed and we didn't help out.
Yeah, no, I just, I just found that out yesterday, sorry. So yeah, so that's, that one is a reading comment. Yeah, that's, so 121. Did anyone? The next one I have is 123.
I had 123.
Anyone have any, anything before 139?
About 126, this is.
126 I had, but that's for the appendix A, so I let you handle that appendix A after.
Oh, I was curious about. I have a question about the $30,000 deposit. We're going to clearing 128. So I'm hard at any clearing, grading, or construction that, ask them, let's hit it this out by certified check 3,000. Is that the same place? On where they cleared the site?
They haven't done any clearing.
Well, they took trees down.
The, the tree work was not in accordance with this permit. It was separate. It was for the NH, it was NH ESP. NH ESP, wow. And, okay, so that's 128.
Okay, I'd like to call that though.
Okay, just. The work that they did was work that they could do whether they have this permit in hand or not. It was completely separate from their comprehensive.
But it's still part of this permit. They're clearing a site that has to do with this permit, so why wouldn't we have the money?
The work that they did, though, was not in connection specifically with this permit. It was work that they could do with or without this permit by right, subject to their NH ESP permit. What's NH? Yes. Natural heritage endangered species. Oh, yeah, okay.
So through you, Madam Chair, so when do they put up $40,000?
Okay, I, so right, I work.
We'll just call that.
Yeah, I want to, we'll get into that when we go forward, okay? So 128 has been put on the board. Anyone else have anything to do with 4139?
140 I had.
Yeah, I had that too, and then this was, I mean, this was a plan adjustment that I believe was being addressed. We can inform that with Don when he goes through. Yeah, I have that on there too. And then the rest of them, I didn't have anything until the page 42, number three. That's construction substantially issue.
Yeah, which they brought here today.
Yeah, and. And then I thought we go over the, the appendix A, so I think that has to do. That's SWP.
Right, yeah.
All right, so. We want to talk about. So if we want to get to, so the first one, did anyone else have any, or is everybody else, is there the ones that I might have? All right, so the first one, 123, George, can I call on you for a second just to, about the easements?
Hi, what's your question?
I just wanted to, so one, condition 123 just says that it's for town council, written submission shall be submitted to the board describing all easements and covenants affecting the use of the subject site. And location of the easement site plan, you don't have to worry about it. Um, so do you have those yet, or is that in process, or are those coming?
I have, I would direct that to the applicant. No, I have not received anything. I, I wouldn't be the one reviewing it. It would be Vicki Marsh from our office for real estate, but I, I know she hasn't received it either, to the extent that there is anything to be provided.
Okay.
Is the only thing through you, Madam Chair, is the sewer easement, is it the only easement on the plan?
Don, on the.
Yeah. So the only easement that, you know, that I'm requiring now is going to be an easement for the water system to want to comment. If you have a draft to that, I think Mr. Chesky has that.
Okay.
And if there is a pump station that goes in, we'll need an easement around that pump station at some point.
So this is, excuse me, um, for you, the dotted line shown on the, the sewer easement, that's not.
Oh, that's an existing easement. Yeah, that's, that's, that's an already documented existing easement.
So through you, Madam Chair, are these easements? Is, is, are we talking about easements that are going to burden the property or the benefit of the property? Seems like, is that what they are? So they're in favor of the utilities.
Well, correct, it'll still be a burden because one of climate has an easement.
I just weren't, yeah, just weren't. And those are the only ones, just for that type of domain pay.
Exactly, but the sewer on the site is going to be private, so we don't want to store it on site.
Is there anything currently, excuse me, through the chair? Is there anything currently in these?
The existing easement, there are two sewer force mains.
Okay. I did not sit on this application, but started to discuss sewer at the last meeting. And I wasn't clear whether, if they get, if they don't need the pump station, are they going to try to enter the forced main?
Just kind of recap real quickly. They go, the proposed plan is to tie into the existing gravity line that's there, that's to be brought online. And the easement that goes through the middle of the property, those force mains, we did not connect to that, never supposed to connect.
Okay.
There is a forced main in South Shore Road. That's the one we would connect to if we had a port of pump station on our own property.
And the, the sewer, the water company is fine with that?
Yeah, well, I talked to David, yeah, David Gray, I talked, we talked to yesterday. He was going to try to make it to this meeting. From what he told us, he has no issues technically with what is drawn. The only thing I think he wants to discuss is, you know, whether we want a pump station, if there's going to be a contribution, you know, to bring the gravity line up to speed.
Great.
Discussion about more money than what was proposed, right?
Yeah, so David Gray was here. He reviewed the plans, and he said, um, he didn't have any. He was, except for the plans as they were, he didn't really have any comments to add, so I told him he didn't need to stay.
You don't put that in writing.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, he didn't put that in writing, and, and yeah, I mean, if there was an extra 500,000 that could come from the developer, that would be great.
Madam Chair, I just want to follow up on Mr. Mar's comments. He mentioned that he doesn't, he wasn't sitting on this. I just want to get a opinion of council, whether, and if all of the board members need to mull in, intend to do that, and what's the effect of that? I mean, it would be, if they have to mull in two years' worth of review, that we, the initial review. I think we need to know that.
Well, do you want to answer that question from Jim?
Uh, sure, no, I, I, I would. My opinion is they do not. This isn't a public hearing. The public hearing on the underlying application closed. So that's only relevant for those that were voting members if the public hearing was still open. This is a separate matter now before the board, so you've, you've got it now in time. And I would recommend that you have your voting members, as currently constituted, vote on the final plan issues.
One of the members is constantly, currently constituted, the members here.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Was that a question to me?
What did you mean by the voters currently constituted, the board is currently constituted?
The five voting members of the board now.
And who are those five?
I, I don't know. I'd leave that to the chair. I, I assume you have five full voting members.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, through you, I think there is some merit to the consistency of the three people that are in the room that originally sat on this, being as part of this review.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
So I think, why don't we make that, why don't we make it a sitting board? I know there was some concern last meeting about, given the time constraints and being flexible, but I think it's, as a priority, we should just make sure that we make all the meetings, so that we can have the original three people that were involved in this whole process to begin with sit on this.
Uh, I don't.
Yeah, I'm just specifying, that's a, that's a different question than if, you know, for the mullin, mullin rule for a public hearing. This is not a public hearing. It's, it's basically an administrative review of the final plan. So I'm not saying anybody should not participate, you know, at the table and, you know, participate in the discussion, but I would recommend you have your five, you know, designate your five voting members on this particular issue thus before you, and have anybody you want to participate in the discussion, but the final vote should be amongst the five members. There's no mullin rule issue on this because it's not a public hearing.
Okay, thank you, George. Okay, so 123, is everyone satisfied with that Vicki Marsh will get copies of the proposed sewer and water easement? And will be those. Leslie, can you, or Nikki, is someone cleared made with, checks with John if he has copies of those? Okay, so that was 123, and then 128, Lisa wanted to discuss, which is the the question about when the, when the $30,000 will, the advanced deposit will be issued. My understanding is that it'll be before they start the clearing and grading. They'll be required to pay that to town, which will be after this is approved. So Madam Chair, I believe that was struck in the AJC decision of.
It was struck on John's thing.
Well, he alludes to it, and has.
And on 37 of his report.
Oh, yes, there's no comment required. The hack decision appears to discuss this condition relative to this procession on conditions 129 and 137, which have been struck, right? I did read that too. Yeah, so it specifically says, conditions 129 and 137 require the developer to pay the town's expenses in evaluating the plans required by the comprehensive permit decision and in monitoring and evaluating construction, including an advance payment of $30,000, and for engineering reviews and the town's construction oversight. Assessment of fees during the comprehensive permit review process that is before the comprehensive permit is issued are appropriate and regulated by 760 CMR, 56.052, and 56.055. But, I'm on page 41 of the AJC decision. But the board has provided no factual support or legal argument to justify assessing the cost of later monitoring, which is typically covered by building permit fees, therefore these conditions are struck. Okay, yeah, so there's not going to be a $30,000.
So 129 to 137 are struck?
129 and 137. Next one to 939 then, which is about the phase one plan. So, um, Tom, can you, can you address this one? So 139 and the half decision says construction months management shall progress through to compliance as continuously and as speedishly as possible and in accordance with the construction sequence and timetable approved. No clear cutting of this site is permitted. Only such clearing as necessary to construct a section of the project and the structure within the bounds that has committed to occur contemporary construction, all natural area, all other natural areas contained, blah, blah, blah. So this, but the phase one plan essentially requires clear cutting of the site except for the perimeter buffer. Is that because, are you, are you not having any other phases because of the way that the project evolved?
There are four phases, which have been in the hydrology report, because it had to do with when our phases or our purposes were only for erosion control in construction, where we show, you know, in each phase, the roads going in, the drainage going in, temporary drainage areas while the earthwork is done, and then we get a storm in that period. But we, we, we did not reveal like a full construction phasing schedule. I think that's up to the applicant. We only include what, what our responsibility was for the. So.
Okay, so, um, is there a representative from the applicant? I can't see him. And the attorney is on there, and the applicant is there also. So would, would someone from the applicant's team want to address that, the, just the, what the plan is there regarding that, that condition and the conflict with the phase one plan?
There, Paul Haverty, Attorney for Surfside Crossing LLC. I know that Jamie Feely is also on this call. Perhaps he can discuss, you know, the phasing. I know that all of the utilities are proposed to be installed at the beginning. So I do think that the, the work for the clearing is necessary at the outset.
Yeah, I'm happy to comment on that through the, the chair, suppose. Phase one does include all of the utilities, all of the underground work, the roads, the sidewalks, and the amenities, so part of the community building.
Phase one plan was approved by what? Phase one plan was approved by what?
Well, the act didn't have any of that stuff. So yeah, I think I wanted to mention on that condition, 139, I wanted to position, just to save as many trees as possible, so that's why you'll see on the site plans in the island with the playground is we went out located every tree that was, that we could possibly save. So that, it won't be clear cut that area in that, these existing trees. They'll all be protected as shown in the landscape design plan. And as Jamie said, because of the loop and the way all the utilities are laid out. As Jamie said, because of the loop and the way all the utilities are laid out, it almost forces us to play the entire lot in order to do all the utilities, unfortunately, how it should be. Even if you look at the older landscape plans that you have, or maybe you don't have a list, or you do have a whole copy, but if you look at our site plan. Listen, if you look at the island where the playground is, yeah, it's that area right there. It's to the west, it's the west side of it.
Hard to see, but it's most true.
What what are we looking at, Madam Chair? So are we supposed to imagine this, Madam Chair?
No, they were all available for us to pick up last week if you wanted, they're being on.
Why aren't they here?
Did you pick them up last week?
No.
Okay, well then do you have them?
Okay, so that that's your view, if I didn't get them.
They're available online, they're available.
Does anyone else need room?
I'm just thinking it might be nice to have a set here just for people to refer to. So they're gonna go get them around. Um, but will we, were you mentioning, will it be a plan that shows how this, how this other phases of the project will work? I I I'm assuming they're not stick buildings, so will a certain quadrant of these?
Who needs the landscape? I'd like to see one, I would give me a little more. Oh, Lisa and I can share. I feel like that would go, like what you're saying dovetails with those, with the two conditions earlier on, a talk about what did you say, 2017 and 2018, the talks about the indigenous trees that Jim, I thought you would be specifically in that area to address that and then of all of us.
Where, which page?
2.2.
Oh, 2.2. Sorry, what are we looking at for that? I can't see any, I mean, I know where the island is, I don't see that, the phasing.
The trees that are being saved in this area on that side of the island.
Oh, that's all we're looking at?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Okay. Are Madam Chair, the trees gonna be, that are being protected, gonna be on any plan that we're gonna be able to see?
So these are, these are obsolete until we get that, is that right?
Ninety percent of those plans stay the same, you know, we just adjusted them out.
Madam Chair, which which ninety percent? I mean, that we.
We can go over each one if you want.
I would like to before June 28th, yeah.
Just feels hard for us to.
This is a bigger size so everybody can see it.
That's also, so this point, we are gonna, this whole process is a cycle number review, but we decided we wanted to review the conditions. That was my understanding for how we were, so this, so so this 139 condition. But it does say only such clearing as necessary to construct upon a particular law. And it's only one law, one law, but.
I think, and maybe this isn't the right time, I would like a phasing, I think it would be helpful to have a phasing plan of how they plan to build out the entire site in terms of timing.
Yeah, I think it says they have, they have three years.
No, I know that, but but I'm sure they have a plan in terms of we're gonna build, you know, the the five buildings west of, you know, from the middle of the island west and then and I'd like to understand that process and these are modular, right?
No, I think.
Oh, they're gonna, they're gonna stick build those.
And it'll be interesting too, because I have a question about that too, because when it's, when it's not, when it's freestanding building, buildings, right? If the cell three, cell one, cell three, cell one, so I, right there with the condos, like you're building, you're obviously building however many nine units or whatever it is in right the building.
And then how are they gonna sell them all? I mean, how are people accessing the site on units that are already completed? And what that process is going to be for safety, so I think we need to, yeah.
I think we'll have all that during, we'll go, when we act to the like the site plan review.
And maybe add in Madam Chair some coloring for the key to show, it's really hard to read this teeny tiny print and understand what's what.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that. I can work with Mr. Feely on making it a little clearer. I mean, like I said, the phasing plan is buried in there in the hydrology because that that was what we were doing for that. But it does show which buildings are going to be constructed in each phase. So but we can take that super fire, use colors and have it be more descriptive for what you've got.
Yeah, I think for you, Madam Chair, I just think it's hard, there's so much paper here. You'd expect us to be able to go through 500 sheets to find this information. Just, you know, not not possible, so it would be great if all that stuff, and I remember it seems just happened, pretty sure we had a pretty clear phasing planning color.
I think, yeah, I think their phasing plan was bigger though because they had, I think their phasing was different because they didn't, they, I can't, I don't think they cleared the whole thing, but they didn't, they didn't.
No, they did have the tab, but then they also showed that switch units were gonna be built first.
Yeah.
So it would be helpful to have their scale.
Definitely a fair and durable request. Forty. John, I think we addressed this similar questions in earlier comments that this one was talking about a construction parking area being with 100 feet of those catch basin inlet. John suggested that it would be an easy adjustment to the plans to have that parking moved outside of that 100 feet.
Yes, we're gonna make that adjustment.
So going back to, we had a discussion about plans last time. That so specifically to the recreational building requirements where in condition 15A and condition 15B and condition E. Talked about referencing the ground covering a thousand square feet and then the parking in eight spaces, but open exhibit three in the current plan show 10 spaces and what what trumped. And this condition here added by hack at the end, I think that the exhibit three is the one that we base off of. Because it's saying here in their condition, they added the development, we shall be constructed substantially as shown on plans entitled blah, 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 exhibit three. And that one shows the, that exhibit three shows the recreational building at 3,912 square feet. So as much as I would like to see it smaller. I think that we are looking at the 3,912 square foot. The current site plan has a footprint that's 3,975 square feet. I don't know what that difference is with the fat. It seems de minimis when we're talking about, you know, well, 2,900 square feet more than we had wanted.
So the decision, Madam Chair, makes even though one was struck.
It wasn't struck, but then they specifically called out here.
What is that exhibit two?
That also, that also.
I just wanted to understand what.
Also says earlier somewhere that the conditions, even if they're not struck, if they're not.
I think, I think, I mean, we can, I, yeah, if you have it, but he says.
Exhibit two is the original ZDA decision.
Subject to those conditions of promise and those in the board's decision.
Yeah, that don't conflict with what hack decided or are.
Modified by this decision, but this decision did not strike it. I don't know.
It didn't strike it, but I know, and I still wanna get the thousand instead of the, but I don't think that works because it's saying as modified by this decision and this decision says this one. I think if it didn't have this calling it out specifically.
So I think we should stick with the decision that if we have to do it, it should be the 3912. You were saying the most recent.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah, I think we should stick with the 3912.
We could ask what the, what the de minimis change is, but.
To tell you what it is. So the foundation dimensions didn't change since that plan was submitted. When they did the final construction plan part, they decided to use a panelized insulation system which actually overhangs like four or five inches from the foundation wall and so going around corner boy to corner boy.
Can they just shrink the building to get it back down to the 3912?
That's an architectural question I would ask the planner, but obviously I'm sure we could get it down here. I'm just making the point, the foundation dimensions are the same as what was accurate.
Okay.
Doesn't the foundation, the ground cover, because you don't go to the corner boy, so aren't you allowed to overhang?
Well, the foundation actually stepped out, you know, for the whole of the channel.
So it's not.
Yeah, it's, we could actually, it depends on which foundation we measure to, the fact that comes out of the lower. I think we're trying to be more conservative.
And then going back to 15E, they had eight parking spaces, but exhibit three shows 10, which are going to be 200.
The actual parking?
Yeah. And then we can move on to exhibit A.
Oh, I wanted to clarify, I had a note about the additional 10 parking spaces to just making sure that is that more in previous area that.
Who is, who is, who does the, who does the drainage?
Madam Chair, is that the compliance with DEP storm regular, storm water?
Yeah, sorry, yep, so that has to deal with conditions 23, 36, 40, 45, 17, 26. 23.
Whether it's the just see or now in the drawings.
Yeah, those are. 136. John, check, do you wanna go over this with us?
Um, you want me just to sort of go through it and just discuss what the comments are so and what they mean? So standard one, there's no wetlands near the site, there's no outlet pipes proposed, so there would be no outlets. And then the other comment is it's untreated stormwater, so what, there's no discharge, everything is infiltrated. And everything does get treated through various systems. I have some comments on those as we move along, but basically subject to the other requirements that we'll get to, standard one would be met. Standard two, typically you do 100 year storm calc, which wasn't done, which is actually fairly simple for this software program they're using, you just add a rainfall in. The intent of the 100 year storm is to show that it doesn't overflow something and flood somewhere and a butter in particular. I mean, most of these systems, the way this site's designed, this interior low areas. If in 100 year storm you get flooding in a parking lot, it's not necessarily considered the end of the world. Because it's a 100 year storm, it's an infrequent event and a little water in a parking lot's not a big deal, but you don't want it to flood out somebody else that could cause a problem. So one of the bigger things on this, you know, this is the minor stuff, but one of the bigger things is there really wasn't any full design for the roof drainage system. The areas shown seem to include not just the roof, but some surrounding areas. There was the increase in impervious area that needed to be caught up with in the calculations. The calculations were based on the exhibit three plans, so there needed to be some work done on that to sort of address the issues that I listed. And I think, I I'm not sure what the, you know, we haven't seen that yet. I understand that it's in the works and being taken, being done. The other comment. So DEP regulations, there's basically multiple handbooks and discussions of what's required. And with subsurface systems as proposed, there is less guidance, but typically you compare those to to an infiltration trench typically, an underground infiltration trench, because that's what they're most like in terms of the design and function. And I think one of the issues would be separation from a living space below grade that that you infiltrate a bunch of water that it doesn't impact the foundation and under a trench design, you'd have to be 20 feet. So I think that's something should be looked at in the design. There's probably ways to do it. I know it's a dense site, so it's a little more complicated, but that's that's a concern there relative to standard two and also standard three. I suspect on the intake it with the soils, that the soils are pretty much consistent through the site. Can't guarantee that because there aren't enough tests, but one of the requirements. One of the requirements is you have a certain number of tests under each system that hasn't been done yet. If this were in a different part of the state, I would be. Much more concerned that they'd find something that. Wasn't as suitable. But it is a requirement and how that gets addressed, they may want to do that. I'm not sure when they want to do it. Sometimes they ask for to do it, you know, during construction. Sometimes they want to do it ahead of time. It should certainly be done before any of the buildings go up for at least the phases that apply. Because if you get a building built and that, and then they find that something sometime in the past was different and there was some conditions that didn't work, it might involve some redesign. So I think that's an issue. So that's. Both standards two and three. Standard three, so standard two is the rate of runoff, standard three is the recharge to groundwater. As noted, they retract all the water, which affects both the rate and the recharge. They're going to be far in excess of what would typically be required for recharge. The next standard four is sediment removal. As I'm sure you're all aware, this is in the zone two of the wells. So there's a little bit higher standard in that, and that's sort of covered under standard six, which is a critical area, but. TSS removal is to get the sand and sediment out pollutants theoretically before it goes into a system. In the case of this site, you need forty four percent pre-treatment. And then the infiltration systems give you eighty percent of removal because materials are filtered out through the soil. There were some comments on that. They included street sweeping, but they didn't include enough data in their submittal to say what that's going to be. Pretty hard to abide by the streets sweeping requirements to get much credit because how is that enforced? You know, who does it? How do you know? So most towns don't allow that as a credit, but that's up to the board, I guess. The. Catch basins to get credit, they get twenty five percent TSS removal if they're. What's called a deep sump catch basin. That means it's a four foot sump with a hood to collect, to prevent gas and floatable. From going out. There was, I believe, one catch basin that was. Collecting over a quarter of an acre of impervious area and that wouldn't get credit. The other ones would. I think that might be something that probably could be revised. I mean, I'm not trying to just design it or look at it, but usually you can add another catch basin somewhere to. Reduce that space to make that credit applicable. The oil grit separator. So again, because it's in a critical area, oil grit separators are a more robust. System to remove if there were a gas spill or an oil spill or any of those types of things. They. Need to look at that because I believe that their calculations and their. Details are not consistent. Relative to that, I guess, certain sizing requirements for the first chamber, et cetera. So. That's an issue. Subject to those things, all of which I think are certainly feasible to do, then they could meet that. And meeting the TSS also would get you through. Standard six, standard five, it's not a higher potential pollutant load. There's not really an issue there. Standard six because it's in the water supply of a zone two. There are certain things you need. One of the things you need typically is a way to shut off if there were a spill. I think this, we talked about this way back in the early. Design review, but there's usually a shut off valve for the oil grid separator so that you don't, if somebody does have a. Gas tank rupture, you can shut it off. It doesn't get into the ground. The last couple, we talked about. The storm water pollution prevention plan last time, last meeting, they did one. I haven't reviewed it. I'm not sure if the board wants me to. I didn't review the phasing plans either. They just noted that they have been submitted and. That's something that could be looked at depending on the board's pleasure, I guess. Lastly, there is. Not lastly, second to last, operation maintenance plan. Obviously, anything that you. You know, design, if it's not taken care of and it's not maintained, it's not going to function, it's going to fail and you'll have problems. So in their report, they included a long term pollution prevention and operation maintenance plan. My comments on that, again, we talked about the street sweeping. There wasn't anything listed in the O and M about street sweeping, so. How do you get credit for removal if you don't even include it as part of the operations? The catch basins according to DEP should be inspected quarterly, so four times a year, but the four times a year generally are spaced out amongst the. The year, they had it sort of bunched up. Different times, I think that you do it quarterly and usually clean them. After leaves drop and then in the fall and in the spring, sort of after the snow potential is sort of over. And well, grid separators should be inspected monthly to comply with the DEP handbook. And lastly, on the subsurface infiltration systems, usually if they use in chambers, the manufacturer might also have some. Manual on how to get in and how to get those cleaned. Those are particularly difficult to clean. Because they're underground and it's hard to access to get the sediments out. That's standard number ten is illicit discharges, and that's something that you need a. Essentially a signed illicit discharge statement. And a plan usually that shows where you already kind of have the plan, but an as-built would show you where. Wastewater goes, stormwater goes, and those should be all in a simple plan, not necessarily as big of a detailed plan as you have. Just how it all works. And then that goes with the. Listen discharge statement, so. That's pretty much what I have there. If you have any comments or questions, happy to. Answer them if I get.
Can you just? Can you clarify the street sweeping credit and what, what, how does that work? And what, I guess, what is your recommendation with regards to that?
Obviously, I do recommend that the streets be swept, you know, on a somewhat regular basis, at least, you know, in the. Spring after you sand the roads, but to get credit in the handbook, they have specific listings. It depends on the type of sweeper. It depends on how frequently you sweep. And each one has a different credit to it. I don't have them memorized as to how much credit you get for the different things, but there's. Your typical sweeper that's got the brooms that rotate and pick it up. And then there's also vacuum sweepers, which are more effective and get you a higher rate. But I generally recommend to towns that they don't give the credit for the street sweeping because. It's not always done. I mean, it just doesn't always get done. And then, you know, they've got a credit that they haven't really, you know, done. One of the things the board, I mean, I think you can't have new conditions, I guess, but one of the things typically is that you can ask that they. You know, provide if requested that the stuff's been done, you know, or that there's a contract with a maintenance company to take care of this stuff so that. You know, these things are being done because everything is dependent on the maintenance. Do the best design in the world and. Construct it properly, but if nobody takes care of it, where are you? But I wouldn't give them credit for street sweeping typically, and. If there's a way to enforce. The maintenance. That would be a good thing as well.
Through you, madam chair, but they'll be able to meet those other requirements even without the street.
Yes, they would.
If they, if they deal with their. Thirteenth, what was it? Catch basin.
That and the oil grid separators as well.
And through you, madam chair, I did want to add one. Condition forty seven is also. Connected to this appendix, because that's where he puts in his recommendations in terms of the maintenance. In forty six, it says that if the EPP has just admitted, desire this to be reviewed and under separate cover. That's stormwater exemption forty six, forty six. Has that been submitted?
It was submitted, yes. It's a, it's a fairly, so the stormwater pollution prevention plan is a fairly detailed. Report and typically, I mean, I review them all the time for towns and typically what I do is there's an EPA template. And that's generally what's used. I believe it was used on this one, although I didn't really look at it with much detail. And I just go through the EPA template requirements. There's a. General permit is that the state's been given for construction phase. Work federal, this is a federal permit, so they have to do what they're altering over an acre land. So. I generally look at that. It's almost like a self-contained letter that would list the EPA requirement. Do they need it? Do they not need it occasionally? And in a case like this, it might be the way it was. They don't have a contractor selected yet sometimes. So there might be some gaps to fill in, but. You know, that's, it is sort of its own separate review. Would have, this one. Was complicated enough to go through frankly, to add something like that to it. You'd have another, you know. Many page letter attached to it. It's just easier to do it separate.
Okay, so. We need to make a motion to request that more.
Madam Chair, I actually have a question. In light of John's comments regarding appendix A. Will the SWPPP change? But in other words, I mean, I'm with Lisa that I think it would be great for John to review this, but if. But I don't think it makes sense for him to review something that would be outdated in light of his further comments.
So John, would you want to, I have your initials next to a lot of these things that you said need to happen, so. Is, are any of these? You know, you have a.
Yeah, I could go through it very easily quickly. If you don't mind, I'll go in the same order.
Sure.
And, you know, John can chime in and agree, disagree. So the subsurface systems were designed for a hundred year storm. We just didn't include the calculations because we wanted to provide a submit for the twenty five years. So we're going to supply the calculations for a hundred years. But it was designed for that. I think one of John's comments that we completely disagree on is his interpretation. Of the setback between foundations or living spaces. To the drywells we're proposing. John references the requirement in the Stormwater Management Act that says, you have leaching trenches. Then you have to be twenty feet from any foundation or livable space. But there's another section of Stormwater Management Act that says if you have a drywall, you only need to be ten feet. And we have drywalls. We don't have leaching trenches. In our opinion, a drywall is a hollow chamber with stone around it. Trenches aren't hollow chambers, but beyond that, we feel. I mean, most of the systems are at least fifteen feet away anyway. Some of the systems are below, the lowest systems are below the foundation anyway, so those shouldn't apply. But this is just the way we've done it on the Nantucket. Most projects require drywells roof runoff. And I don't think there are many instances where we can get drywalls twenty feet from a foundation. You know, on the Nantucket. And with these soil conditions, with the waterproofing methods that they're going to have, because there is living space down there. We think the ten feet is adequate, but we will, we're going to adjust them on the plans that we're submitting tomorrow to get them as far away as possible. But I just think that would be a kind of setting precedent in the Nantucket. It's not realistic and it's not what's been done here. And all the ones that were done over the years, we never had any issues with the drywells that are that close to the foundation. So. In our, in our opinion, you know, we give as far as we can, but we don't have to meet that, that twenty feet. Again, the street sweeping, we have already said, we'll just scratch that. Usually we just show it because it's intended. It's in the operation and maintenance program. We can. Beef up the operation and maintenance program to include more language with that. So a test pitch, you probably know, we did as many as we could in the limited area that we had. We couldn't go any further because of natural heritage. That will be one of the first things that we want to do as soon, as soon as it gets clear enough for us to go in there and do it. We're going to be providing more information and details on the roof runoff. All the other comments, we know we can address. As far as the capacity of all grid separators, again, we have a difference of opinion, but we're not going to argue about it. Changes. If you, the grid separators have two compartments, primary compartment, secondary compartment. We meet the requirements when you add both compartments together as far as volume goes. What John is saying is that you have to meet that requirement in the first compartment and everyone does it a little different. So we're not going to argue that fact. We're just going to increase the sizes where we need to in order to make that work. As far as the emergency shut off after the old grid chamber, what John says is, is correct. Sometimes we do provide an emergency shut up, but the problem with that is that's manually. And we feel, given the use, the potential for spills, mainly it would be vehicle, gas tanks and that sort of thing, not having oil delivery or anything like that come into the site. But the volume inside the old grid chambers is already adequate enough to contain these spills. So we don't feel that, you know, adding a shut off valve is necessary.
Madam Chair, I can, the engineer, can John please elaborate on this difference of opinion on the drywall versus.
Sure. So if you look at the DEP handbook, there's a couple of things that. Could be improved, were they to clarify, but so the system proposed on this site. If you look at the DEP handbook detail of a drywall, it's a small thing for. Typical roof for a house. It's not actually even a chamber and it's designed to handle what would be called the required recharge rate. For compliance with standard three, which is recharge. Standard three for recharge. Is based on the soil conditions, which would say in this site, six tenths of an inch. Is the volume required, but in the, but the plans are to recharge the hundred year storm in these systems. It's a vastly different. Design. You know, they're large chamber systems to take a lot of water in one spot. It's a different thing, in my opinion. Now, I have less familiarity with Nantucket, obviously, than I'm sure all of you do. You live there and you know what the soils are like. If a system is below the basement, it's unlikely that it's going to flood the basement, but if it's. Above the basement and. Can go sideways, especially if they get plugged up, it'd be more of an issue. I did not look, all the designs weren't really done, so you couldn't even look at them on a, you know, building by building basis, but. I think that it's two different things. And I think if you look at the handbook, you'd see that and. I mean, I think it's important to have that to protect the future residents. It's condominium and they'll own it and. You know. You know, I would say, you know, you are more familiar with the conditions on Nantucket, and if that's the way everything's done and the board's fine with it, that's fine, but. I'm going to take the conservative approach of being further away to be safe.
All right, thank you.
I think we should agree with Mr. Chassia on this.
I was going to say, I think. I, I'd like to see the plans that come in and how, you know, you said your summer fifteen feet below, I go below foundation, but below. And then you're sitting, you're going to submit plans tomorrow and you're going to move them as far as you can, so let's.
Don, just, is this common for commercial properties on Nantucket to do this?
Commercially and residential, especially if you're talking about conservation commission, a lot of times that's a stated condition. But we, we've already committed to providing more detail for the rain system itself. We're going to provide detail for each individual type, building type, show how they're connected to the drainage and that sort of thing. We've planned on those being, that mission being submitted with the building permit, but because the questions came up. What we also can do is provide more detail and, you know, I can talk to John about it, you know, offline or whatever, maybe, maybe we can agree on something. As far as that goes, but it also has to do with the elevations in reference to the living space and that sort of thing, so. I think we can learn something. I think, you know. I think, I think we can demonstrate that it's going to be adequate. It's not going to be a threat to the living space.
All right. So let's, Jim, I think you make a good point. We should circle back definitely on this one.
And can we ask John his opinion on the shut offs?
Sure. So I mean, the shut offs are listed as a, there's a requirement in the D E P handbook. So that's why I, I mean, basically I take these the handbook and I look at the plans and it has it or it doesn't have it. So it's a sort of a pass fail. And if it doesn't have it, it should have it. That's what is required by D E P in a critical area. Now, if you're going to not, if you're going to allow that to be waived, it should be with insight from water company because it's their system that gets the impacts. So if you, I am not against you waiving it if that's the case, but it should be based on something from the water company because they're the ones ultimately impacted.
I mean, personally, I don't see the need to waive that. Why would we require it to be a part of?
We'll add it. We don't just, we kind of disagree again that it's required because in this case, what we have, that's, that is a requirement. But it's a general requirement, I believe, and we have the oil gas separator already. So we, we felt that that was adequate. And it always has served to be adequate. When all the other projects were ever done on the island, done the system many times. But again, it's not worth debating. You know, it's an extra layer of conservatism to allow.
That would be maintained by the superintendent.
You are the sites who have people out.
One more follow up, just because I know this is environmentally sensitive area. John, you mentioned the this inspection requirements. Do you have examples of what other municipalities require or we, do we have something to insurance done on a regular basis and you know, can be followed up on and be enforced?
It's a tough one because the I mean, some towns have it, there's a few different ways they do it. One, they can they can ask to get copies of inspection reports on an annual basis, but then there's somebody at the town has to be equipped to review it and look at it and see that it was done. I mean, it could be a database or something that, but that somebody takes care of. But if you think about how many of these there may be, it's, it's a, it's an issue all around. I think it's probably something that you would be wise to have it in there somewhere that you can get it or that they submit it. And then where it goes from there at the town end is a whole nother issue, but at least then there's a little bit of a little bit of cover there that somebody's prepared it and looked at it. And if the condominium, you know, ultimately the condominium association, it is to their benefit to do all this work. And so sometimes one of the things they might ask for a contract you know, and is part of the conditions would be before this is turned over. There's a contract and the contract to maintain it, you get a copy of. That's another option. It's a difficult one. Everybody struggles with it. All towns struggle with it. It is more and more places get built. It's almost like you'd have a whole person just looking at these things at some point in time. And it's, you know, nobody really has that sort of staff or person. So
No, yeah.
I was just going to, Leslie, you have a point that I was going to say, maybe we could look, I don't know. I don't remember what we did with stations path, but since it's like right in the same area, we can see what we did.
Yeah, we can look at that decision, but I wanted to point out that the planning board deals with this type of issue all the time in subdivisions and other projects. And they just have the operation maintenance plan submitted. It's in the file. There's usually a condition that the applicant has to operate and follow it. And then we just refer back to it. If there's an issue that needs to be addressed, it's not, you know, something that we are constantly monitoring or having them submit reports. And generally, we find that there's not an issue.
Is, has planning board reviewed this or the plan not reviewing it similar to H D C?
No, there's no planning board review. Just on the board.
Well, I, what I mean is like H D C, we're, you know, we still ask for their expertise. It's, this is outside of what we normally do.
Right. So if this was a planning work project, they would be deferring basically to the John Chassia, to their engineer.
So my understanding that from what you just said is other than the disagreement on the setbacks, which you're going to pull them out as far as you can, talk to John about that and then come back to us with the new plan and maybe some communication that you guys have had, that the suggestions that he's made in this appendix A would be implemented into. Does anyone have any more questions or comments for either John or Dawn or anyone else on the appendix A? So do you have any updates on any of the conditions that we've been through last week? That's a kind of a broad question, but.
I did, I think I emailed to Leslie last night, just taking John's report like we've done in the past and just putting our, our comments in red.
Oh, great.
You know, just something like that, just so it's easier to follow. And there are a few items that I said should be addressed by others that I think Jamie Feely is going to be addressing.
I have not even seen my email yet. So.
It was like last night. So.
That's okay. So if you could just like, if you just want to, do you want, is there a lot to run through?
I think actually everything that's here, we already talked about at the last meeting and we talked about today as far as what our responses are.
Okay. So we'll just email us that and then we'll have it. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
What happened with the other, with the fire department and them being a part of?
So the fire department.
The fire department, I believe this meeting with your, their consultant is getting your applicant's consultant to go over.
Correct. We have a fire consultant called Code Red. And the person that is dealing with this project, I guess he was teaching last week and he's trying to follow up, I believe, next week with the fire department. When, you know, he's confident that he can address all the issues. I don't think there was anything from an engineering standpoint that we had to address. Once they meet.
And one more question. So when is, when can we expect the landscape plan, the most updated landscape plan?
It's here.
Oh, okay. But even showing the color phase, what we talked about earlier, what do you think? You have two weeks?
Yeah, we're probably, we're focusing on getting the plans and everything. So we'll probably follow up at that time, you know, next week sometime.
And we have the extension until the thirty.
Twenty eight, yeah.
Do we have something in writing to that?
Yeah, I think I had, I had an email this morning that came through that I saw.
And then I think, John, you had requested the trauma association documents. Are we getting those?
You'll be getting those at some point, but that's not really part of the plan review.
Yeah, it's on the line. That doesn't have to happen before the twenty eighth of June.
Did you request them before the twenty eighth of June?
I don't know if they have them.
I mean.
Because I remember in stations path, we definitely reviewed those. I'm sure.
You'll be reviewing them at some point. I don't know, but it gets, that's separate from the plan review.
I don't think we have enough to do before June twenty eighth at least.
So we'll be able to make comments on them, even if this plan review is complete.
Yeah, because they're two different things. Okay.
Can I bounce back to item seventy five really quick before we feels like we're wrapping it up. So we'll just, this part, another, we should have that. Yeah. It was so, I just want to be clear about seventy five project, how endangered species. So the developer went ahead and cleared, but what he cleared before he was but what he cleared was had nothing to do with with this. I'm not really.
They tried, they had another permit, right? They had this N H E S P determination. And so whatever that, whatever that was allowed them to, my understanding, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, allowed them to do whatever.
So he has not broken protocol.
I don't think so, but I, that's not, that's not before us. So I haven't, it's not something I've looked into.
Well, I guess the thing that I was just including exhaustive court appeals, which I believe are still ongoing.
So. There's a correction. The work that was done on the site could have been done by right, no matter what. So that was work that they didn't need this permit to do. So just because you have a permit, doesn't mean you're suddenly subjecting yourself to it.
So I guess my question is, they didn't need any permit to do what's been done so far. They, just by owning it allows them to do what's been done so far. Is that true?
They did not need a permit from the zoning board. They didn't need any permit from anybody, not from the town.
Well, they did need a permit, right? Because it was, had to be delivered to the site.
Well, for the record, I did not deliver anything to the site. So that people keep saying that and I did not do that.
That's why I don't want to go on record and be really clear about that. I want to know. It feels very gray to me. So I am maybe the developer wants to go on record to clarify that.
Jamie, do you want to? Well, just a second. The attorney Haverdy has had his hand up. So make sure. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, first, the reason I had my hand up was to address the comment with regard to the, the fire department review. Just I wanted to let the board know that we will get that submitted to the board by Monday. Our consultant has been away. But we should be able to have that submitted by Monday. With regards to the natural heritage matters, these, these issues have been handled by Chip Nyland, who is the environmental attorney. I do want to point out, all appeals were resolved with regards to the environmental permitting at the time that the tree cutting took place. A subsequent appeal was filed afterwards. That was not a timely appeal and it's currently the subject of a motion to dismiss.
So does my answer my question? What's your question? Then, so.
So by, so there's nothing pending. Everything has been dealt with and agreed to. And there is no wrongdoing on the developer's part at this point. And I'm just connecting back to item seventy five. So I just know that it's not, doesn't have anything to do with the Z B A, what has been done so far on the lot. And I'm also curious. It has been found that what has been done so far clearing wise broke no rules. Is that true?
Madam Chair, that's a legal opinion we have our counsel upon.
Yeah, it was mass negotiations.
Why not?
Because, you know, the reason why I ask is because if rules are already being broken by the developer and there are gray areas and he's pushing the envelopes already, I want to know how we're going to police the overall project and how we're going to police every single detail, every bit of minutia that we're going over so far. And then what's our recourse? We're sitting here confused whether or not. And I'm sure neighbors are upset and confused and wondering. And everything happens behind closed doors with attorneys and appeals and filings. I want to know so far that there hasn't even been ground broken yet, other than this clearing. And it was a huge matter. I want to go on record right now and know if this developer is already breaking the rules, said simply.
Okay. George, do you want to address the, any N H E S P permit and whether there's any ongoing objections?
Yeah, sure. Yep, I can, yeah, yep, I can quickly comment on that. As Leslie had noted, there was no, there was no zoning violation for what they did when they cut the trees down. And in fact, that happened on a Saturday morning. And I scrambled to, to respond to it as well. I received text messages in the morning and got in touch with Leslie, who had actually gone to the site to find out what was going on. And what happened on that day was the developer had the approval and they had the permits in hand because I think they showed it to like the police department or somebody that they had, that, that was pursuant to their work with natural heritage, that they had the necessary permitting for that. But from the town's perspective, and again, we responded immediately to find out. You know, if there was any violation of local regulations or zoning and, and we determined that there was not, that they were able to do that as of right, regardless of, you know, the fact that they had the state permitting that they needed to do it. On, on the pending appeal involving natural heritage, I, I believe Attorney Haverdy is correct. And I think it was conveyed pretty clearly by him. I believe that land council has filed something seeking to reopen it or something like that. But that the permit that, that was required for the developer to have to do what they did, they, they did have that in hand and that they were entitled to do it. You know, I should, I don't represent the developer, obviously, but you know, I should comment. I, I don't know of any, I don't know of any violations that the developer has committed in terms of town regulations or really any other permitting. So I do have to make that comment. I don't know you know, where that's coming from, that they're, you know, quote unquote, in violation of something. I, there's been nothing brought to town council's attention that, you know, involves any type of violation by this developer with regard to this project. So I don't know if that, hopefully that answered your question.
Controversial. That's why I wanted to, to ask because there have been so, there's been so much hearsay that I wanted it clarified with developer, with this board, with people representing other departments of this town. If he hasn't broken any rules so far, even though people have filed things against him, I want to know that whether he has or not, for sure, especially referring to the zoning board. So the answer is no.
I think the answer is no. The reason I had George answer because he represents the town. So he would know if the town was saying there's any violations. There are no violations right now that are in play. I mean, we can ask the developer's attorney if this, if the developer's playing in the gray and making violations, but I can't imagine that his council is going to go on record and say that.
Well, Susan, counsel could at least indicate because in, to my knowledge, there, there are no violations, but counsel could certainly indicate to the board that whether there's any claim pending against them, you know, but, but I don't know about.
Question.
Hold on one second. So Attorney Haverdy, can you from, through me from George, can you just confirm or give us a, an update on any violations for this project that you're currently defending against?
So there are no violations associated with this project. If I can provide some clarification with regard to the natural heritage process. So at the time, this was originally in front of the board for the permitting. There, there had been a parallel process going with natural heritage. A adjudicatory appeal had been filed, both the town and the, the Nantucket Land Council jointly filed that appeal. The town was ruled to have not had standing. But the land council was found to have had standing. That was still pending when the board issued its decision why there, which is why there is that condition in there that talks about resolving all outstanding litigation. That litigation was, the adjudicatory proceeding was completed in favor of my clients. There was an appeal taken to the Superior Court. That, that appeal was resolved in favor of my clients. There was no further appeal of
That that appeal was resolved in favor of my clients. There was no further appeal of that decision. My clients went forward with the the process of obtaining the conservation management permit from natural heritage. That included the requirement of filing a deed restriction on the property. It included the the requirement of providing a substantial escrow to natural heritage for the protection of the species that are of concern on the on the property. All of that was done. We obtained final sign off from natural heritage prior to any tree cutting occurring on the site. Everything that has occurred on the site to date has been a hundred percent absolutely appropriately.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Does anyone have, Jim, did you have a follow up?
No, I don't.
Okay, so we circled back to seventy-five. Does anyone have any other questions or comments? Anyone about the conditions at this time? So do we, do we want to move on to looking at the plans? And have a discussion about anybody's questions or concerns there?
Well, Madam Chair, I mean, I assume big revised plans, even even further, further revised.
Yeah, I mean, I guess like more like big picture questions are.
I wasn't sure if we were in a point to, I wasn't sure how many big picture items, questions we could deal with or whether this is so technical in nature that we're, you know, we can't, we can't really opine on the number of units, the number of bedrooms, anything like that, but really we're looking at the details. So I, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, and and I just think having Don's report back in his responses and the new plans seems important to have before even looking. Would you look, they're going to change.
Yes. Um.
Again, if I'm, I'm just, when do we think, do we have a, just, again, we know, knowing that we have a deadline forty days from now, forty-one days from now, of when, I assume we'll be meeting again and again and again and again. When do we? When do we think we'll get the plans and how much turnaround time do we think John?
John, he's, he's got a couple of weeks, right?
So, or or are we going to do something where we can do sort of some of the plans and then wait for John's comments? Or I'm just trying to think what may be efficient in terms of making sure we meet our deadline.
Right, so we are going to have updated plans tomorrow. We'll have John's report today, when he's in.
So they'll go to John Chesia immediately with John's report, because we want to get his comments back.
So John, what do you think is realistic for us to try to plan to meet again?
So I think what you might be able to do that would be, you know, in terms of shortening the time a little bit, is you could certainly look at the landscape plans. I'm not a landscape person, so you could certainly look at those. I'm not sure what, what you're looking at relative to architectural or the building plans. In particular, I mean, I know that there's a new community building and that's a whole nother is issue that's been discussed. I think if you can make progress on the landscaping, on the architectural, on any of those items, and then follow that with the the civil plans and calc, I mean, you'd be making progress that's, I'm not holding you up on. And that might be effective, because it does, it generally does take me a couple of weeks from when I get the stuff to get something done. I mean, it's not that if I had nothing but time just to work on one project, that would be nice, but it's not that way. I know next week I have a few days in the field and so that, you know, that's, that's probably about the best I can do. I will, while, while everybody's listening, I mean, I'm just going to ask Dawn, send me a hard copy again too, please, because the plans are large and I need the full size ones, not the little ones to review.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to extend the ninety-day period, ask for an extension after we receive final plans. Basically, the developer has sent us conceptual plans on in March, and we need it full time. I don't, I don't see how we can do this when they're sending, keep sending plans and they don't have their ducks in a row. And it's unfair to have us, to jam us on this. I mean, they could have started with a picture of the project and then deliver final plans a day before we were to make a decision. And I want to make a motion that we ask to extend the the date of our review ninety days following their submittal of final plans.
For a second, though? Well, I don't.
There's a motion on the table.
I just want to remind everyone that we did just ask for an extension last week and they did grant it. Yeah.
That's great, but we haven't, now we've delayed another two weeks. I'm sorry I'm upsetting you, Madam Chair, about the timeline.
You're not upsetting me, Jim. I just think, I just think you're very aggressive about this, and you were last meeting and you are this meeting, and you're, you're you're really stepping outside of your role on the board.
I don't agree. I don't agree. And if there's a motion on the table, and if it's seconded, then I don't think you'd do that. I I didn't intend, I did not attend a dinner with the developer and and you did. And that's why you're upset and I'm.
I'm not upset, that's not why I'm, I'm, first of all, I'm not upset and I I think it's.
Well, I think you've changed your view from the time. But but forgetting this or table in this, I have a motion on the on the table if someone wants a second.
Okay, hold, hold.
You can't, you're going to hold up a second on this?
I'm going to hold up a second and respond to your, your.
No, I responded to your view of where I stand on this board. Okay, and we can go back and forth, but and avoid a second on this, and that's.
I'm not avoiding a second on it.
If you want to discuss it after the second, that's fine.
You should.
She did.
I mean, I don't think.
She's, she's sitting right here.
I don't think it's an unreasonable request to get more than essentially, once John reviews, says that it comes back to us, well, in twenty-seven days. If if John brushers math was right, then we.
And why are you so against extending the time? I'm sorry if it does that.
I am not against extending the time. I just think it's a little premature to ask for an extension when we just got an extension. I think that we should review what we have and then get a more meaningful extension, then use up all the chits that we have to get extensions when we just got one. But I am one person.
Okay.
If it's a force of pleasure to do that.
My view is that the ninety-day period that that the hack sent to us, down to us, our review starts when we get a set of plans that are final and we can adjust them. But we, this is far. And I just think, give us the full ninety days, and I'm asking to request it, I'm not demanding it. And I want it on the table and vote whether we should ask for the ninety days. And I know you want this thing done and you want this project started and approved. But I, I think we need time to review.
A lot of words in my mouth, Jim, that are not.
Well, as a chair, you need to support, you, you're, you have a role as a chair, but not to constantly fight with members. And that's out of line.
I'm not sure about that, but I have a question for Leslie. It's appropriate.
Sure, Jim.
Before we, in terms of of the deadlines, we ask the applicant for another extension and the applicant turns us down. Hack's already given us a timeline. Do we go back to hack and and ask them to extend it?
This may be a better question for George Pucci, but I believe that Hack directed you to review the plans within ninety days. The applicant has granted an extension, extension second being mutually agreed upon. So they could go back to hack, the applicant. You could vote to not approve the plans, but you would need a really good reason for that. And quite frankly, I don't understand why you all think these aren't final. I mean, they're final in the sense of, yes, they may need to be tweaked, but most of the information is there. This is a technical review. You're supposed to be looking at, you know, this amended decision and your comp permit and see if, you know, the plans estimated meet the requirements. So I, I'd like to hear from the board what your intentions are or what you're planning to get out of a further review beyond just that, because I don't see how it's going to take you that long. And the engineers are working together. Everything's outlined in here what they need to do, so I'm sure it seems pretty straightforward to me.
I'm just, just because we're given the extension doesn't mean we can't give them permission to go ahead earlier, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, the ninety days is like, you know, the bookends, right? We have up until ninety days, and we think that we need more based on all of the information and the comments that went back and forth even last week and then this week.
So if we're able to review it sooner than the ninety days.
Yeah.
And they get us everything, then we can say, okay, it hasn't been the ninety days, thanks for the extension. And we're all, we're all in agreement that it's over and they can start.
Yeah, I mean, the ninety days, you don't have to do ninety days, that we have that period and now we have ninety plus whatever, two more weeks. But, yeah.
I think, if I may.
Sure.
I think it'd be more appropriate to get the information we're requesting in a timely manner, discuss it, and if we need the extension, do it in our next meeting. So I, I guess I will be voting against the motion.
Um, yeah, so I just want to clarify really quickly, though, with the, how, how our structure works. We, in the, actually, let's vote first and then, and then we can do it. But I think the motion needs to come from an actual, like a, like a full member, not an alternate. So one of the other members.
That's point of order. I, I am sitting on the board. I make a motion. There's no authority that says I can't vote on my own motion. And I am a sitting member of this board and you are purposely obstructing.
No, I'm not, Jim. I'm trying to do this the right way.
Germinating the board to get the vote to.
No, I'm trying to do this the right way, because it has come to my attention that we have been one, that you sat on the the surfside crossing because we didn't have enough members to sit on it. So that is why you sat on it. You and Jeff, the alternates, voted on that comp permit. Town council, again, confirmed today that this is, this review is a separate matter and that the five members should vote on this final, whatever the final decision or sign the final comp permit or whatever we do. The alternate's role is to be designated by the chair to sit in the case of an absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest of any of the members there or in the event of a vacancy. So I just, I'm not saying the motion can't happen. I just think for procedure, it should come from a, a, a member, not an alternate member.
Even if you argue that, this, that is not the custom of this board. This is not how we run.
It hasn't been, but.
You're using this to gerrymander a vote of the board.
Well, you, Lisa already seconded it, so I'm, I'm not, I don't think it's going to change the vote. I think it just makes it more appropriate. Because, because, Jim, you have brought all this to the surface, all of this, trying to file things in court, trying to call meetings, requesting agendas to be changed, directing staff to do certain things. You are challenging the authority and the respectability and the the way this board, the scrutiny of this board is, is the scrutiny the board is coming under. And I voted, actually, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter what the issue before us is, the subject matter of this review or this project. It's the procedural way that you have circumvented the authority of the board, circumvented. I spoke about it last time, and I don't want to continue to have things going in a way that are not exactly by the book and exactly the way that we should, because we are now open to, like I said, a higher level of scrutiny by this applicant based on actions that you have taken outside of the authority of the board by putting yourself out in the community as speaking for the board. So I just want to protect the board and have a full member make the motion.
Let me, let me respond to that respectfully disagree. And if you're referring to me talking to the press, that's my opinion. There, there is no, the First Amendment allows me to speak. I never said as a member of this board, this is what I see. And if you're setting this up, that's just the wrong way to be. It's never been the tenure of this board to be combative and accusatory. And if this is going on behind the scenes, it's, it's really not how this board should be run.
Can I answer George's question?
Sure.
I just want to clarify, because I believe what George said was that new members don't need to mull in but that it would make sense to set a five-member board now who will be voting. And then, and then we never did that, so I just want.
And you are excluding someone who sat through this for a year and a half.
I don't, Jim, I'm the one who said, like, two meters ago, that needs to, like, the three of us that sat through this all.
Yeah.
Yeah, need to be a part of the discussion.
Discussion and vote. I mean, how, how do you distinguish that?
Well, you can, because if something comes, the whole purpose of having alternates, right, is so that everyone participates in the discussion, everyone can ask questions, all of that. But during the time, if somebody drops off, somebody gets sick, something happens, that we have extra people to vote. So I think declaring who is going to vote now, that's why we don't do that. We do it at the time of the vote.
Well, I would just respectfully disagree that I think you could set a board. And if I get sick or whoever, then an alternate, a person that's not those first named five people would then step in. I, I think that's fair. I think that's fair to have the person that did sit through nine, you know, however, eighteen months, two years of the. The voting member on this plan review. And if somebody gets sick, if I get sick, if you get sick, then.
I respectfully disagree with your position and it is a bias against me. And I am expressing my view as a member of this board and you are retaliating against me with your comments and trying to gerrymander the vote so that I don't vote on this, which is absurd. And accusing me of violating some First Amendment rights to speak to the press.
Madam Chair, I, I suggest, this, this is getting out of hand. It's not fair to the board or with anyone in the audience. I suggest that we, the motion's been made and seconded. I have a feeling that, that if somebody else on the board made the same motion Jim made, I'm not sure it's going to affect the vote at all.
That's why I was saying, I just think that procedurally, I think that that's the way that it should go, but.
So, so I, I think, let's limit the bloodshed here and vote.
Yeah, right, but I do want to get back to trying to set a voting.
I, I think that that's the way it used to be in the old days. At some point, the previous town council, what was her, I'm trying to.
Alana.
Alana Quirk suggested that a lot of boards do it differently, where everyone sits behind the desk and then somewhere in between, we, we lost control of who was sitting. Because the first question a, a lawyer usually asks is who would, who would be sitting on this? So.
But I think this is a unique situation that, then, you know, having. But I think this is a unique situation that, that, you know, having seven people review a project that comes to us and maybe two meetings. And yeah, I, I think that that's one thing, that this is a, 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 something that was worked on for multiple years. With a lot of back knowledge, I think, of going through the first comprehensive permit. That it's a different situation, but, um, so I'm not saying that we don't take a, a vote on, um, I guess I'll make it my motion, um, first, but I do want to get back to the.
Okay.
No, I asked that you vote on the motion.
Yeah.
On my initial motion.
Okay.
And can you, that you second. It's fine.
Well, I don't think it's the right, I don't think it's the right, I don't think it's the right procedure, but I'm.
I, I just, you know, made a motion, uh, about because, uh, the, and extending the ninety days.
Yeah.
Requesting it, just like we did last week, when we get a final set of plans that we can spend time on.
So what are you, so what are you requesting an extension to? Oh, so ninety days.
Review.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think in the condition ninety-seven, part of the method of any construction, blah, blah, blah. Detail construction drawings to the board. Construction drawings, final plan shall also be filed for copies. So I think he's just requesting that the final plans, which we are, have not gotten yet. Um, help, give us a little bit more time to review them.
But if you're saying final plans, then that, like, these are the final plans.
I don't know, it says way, including final plans, including paving plans, way, not underground utilities plans, what?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff and, and throughout John's report, you know, final plans deleted here. So I don't think it's an unreasonable request. I mean, I guess it's the question of what is a final plan.
Right, I mean.
But, but it just doesn't seem unreasonable to.
So you're saying there, but there, you're saying that you're calling the final plans their, their, their best. But then we could make revisions to those.
And Madam Chair, let me, I'm asking this, I'm asking for this vote for the benefit of this board. I'm not trying to be obstructive.
No, I know. I agree with Michael, though. I think it's premature, given that we, or whatever, that we already.
I, I, I think we got a two-week extension, I believe, because it was going to take John Chesia two weeks to review the next, the drawings. Is that how the G twenty-eight came up? As a date? I don't remember.
I don't remember. I just saw the email from.
Yeah, I think we talked about that at the last meeting. It would, it would have been nice to have been given more time. Not just the two weeks that we needed for the new information to be submitted to us and then go to John.
But unfortunately, I think that is how, and you two will remember, I think that is how the extension went when we were doing all of the debate for this, like the extensions were kind of given at this you know, those trips and traps a little bit here at a time to not get, to not have these longer patches.
But then I think they did not give us the, the final extension. We had to.
Right, and that is my concern.
Is that they might not give us that final extension, so can we request? Maybe it's not the ninety days from the final plan, maybe we just request some more times. I mean, it's just a.
I just would like to see what we get back for the next meeting and then request. So then we have, I don't want to keep asking and asking. That's.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. Why not get ninety days? We don't have to keep asking.
Madam Chair, is there a rule about how many times you can ask for an extension?
No, I just think it's, I just, I don't.
It's unfair for the developer.
No, I don't think it's unfair for the developer. I just think it's a waste of time.
But if we're not having, I think updated plans should just reflect everything that's been agreed to verbally. And it should be reflected in a plan that we all agree on before we give the okay. On a, on a hard plan before we all say okay. And if we ask for ninety days, we don't have to take the full ninety days. But it allows the developer's side and the town side a chance to get everything as updated as possible before we give it the green light. I don't, I don't see anything terribly wrong with asking for that.
Jimmy, the motion Lisa seconded, um, do a little poll vote. So this is to request a ninety-day extension from the date that we get the final plans that comply, complies with the.
What, what the board deems to be an acceptable final.
Well, I think, I think that's kind of a slippery slope, though. I think we have to just assume that the plans that we're getting tomorrow. And your response are the final plans.
And that reflect the board's requests.
Right. It'll have all the drainage information, it'll have all the impervious, all that stuff will be in these drawings. All questions answered.
Yeah, and I'd just like to make a quick statement. These were the final plans that we submitted. All the changes that we're making shouldn't take Mr. Chesey a long time to review. And just like lawyers, engineers disagree as well. And, um, you know, we're, we're making all the changes that we possibly can to satisfy Mr. Chesey and his board. And if you look at the plan sets, I forget, there's probably twenty sheets in there. We try to submit this as a construction set of plans. I don't think there's any comments that Mr. Chesey has presented that we can't address in our plans. That's why I said we would address these and have the plans thrown tomorrow. Now, it's my impression, I've been involved in forty Bs and other places as well, is that that ninety-day period, this is part of that ninety-day period. You know, you review it, you come up with comments, we discuss it, and we make changes to try to address those comments. And that's the period that we're in right now. So I, I can't see how, you know, you can turn back the ninety days to when you get this revised.
I think the difficulty is, uh, Dawn, was just that it felt like last week was our first review of these plans. And that I'm late based on when the ninety days started.
But, okay, but guys, again, we had, I, I know, I, I, I heard that last week too, or, or a lot of, but we had access to those plans.
I can't look at five hundred sheets of a construction drawing without this kind of commentary from somebody that understands this and, and, and know what I'm looking for. I mean, that was ridiculous to think that we could go through that.
Right, so that's why we, that's why we didn't have, that's why we waited till we got this to have the conversation. But we did have the plans and could look at them, so I.
But we didn't, weren't able to get the answers until this public meeting that we had last week.
Take a little more time would be helpful, you know, and I, but I do think trying to let, make, making us the people that decide, oh, well, these aren't final yet. That's, that's a slippery slope. And I think we have to say, okay, the drawings we get tomorrow are final.
But we just got through the list of a hundred and fifty-something items, so I don't think we're, we're missing.
Cause April eleventh, John Chesia got the drawings. So maybe that's the day that the ninety day, well, maybe, I don't know. I don't know when to start it, but he didn't get the drawings till April eleventh. It'll all be him submitted March twenty-seventh.
Right, I, I think the timeline should start, maybe, maybe it should start as of when.
So, so we don't determine when the timeline starts. So if you want to pick an end date that you want to ask the developer to extend to, we, we can do that. That's what the motion is right now, right? To ask them to extend, so pick a date and we'll vote on it, um.
I think, I think the developer indicated that he wanted to work with the town in good faith and that's, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, right, that's, I think that was indicated, I think that's.
Before we vote, should we save the date or are we just voting to pick a date?
Well, we're asking, we're voting to ask the developer to agree to a date that we're picking. So if we've already extended to June twenty-eighth.
But forget about what we've already had extension. I don't care. I want to know, if we're picking in this vote, are we picking the date right now? I don't, whether we made, asked a hundred times for an extension doesn't affect my vote right now. Are we picking a date right now that we're asking the developer because he's more likely to maybe comply with us if we say a date instead of leave him in limbo.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Give us a July twenty-eighth, or, I mean, I mean, even, I think even thirty-four days.
Sure.
I, I'm, you know, maybe it doesn't have to be ninety days from tomorrow, but it could be, you know, just another month. I think two weeks.
And now, uh, enough time. I will amend my motion to include, uh, the, what do we decide?
I was going to say the end of July because that means.
I would make it July, July twenty.
Can you just say the motion again?
Yeah, you want to make it or do you like being made?
Uh, yeah, I'll rescind it.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to request that the applicant, um.
We have to change, change the motion.
Yeah.
We have to do something.
Yeah, so he said he rescinded it, so he's.
Okay, and then. You're rescinding your second.
I'm rescinding my second.
Yeah.
And then I'm going to make a new motion to request the applicants to give us an extension until July twenty-eighth to review, um, what are deemed to be the final plans that we're going to be receiving tomorrow.
And I'll second that. Okay. All right, so that motion has to be.
One question, um. I don't need to, to vote, but are there five people voting?
I'm going to, I'm going to do the five regular members.
Okay.
Yes, and we don't, if we're able to finish earlier.
Yeah.
We don't have to wait until now.
No.
Right, yeah, and that's fair.
Can I just back, comment about, uh, and see if we, what is the man on which we're going to make this request?
Oh, I. Yeah, maybe would George write a request?
I mean, we have, we have it ready on right now, so.
Yeah, maybe they can just respond right now. I don't know.
Well, I don't know. They've got a lot of time, but yeah.
Maybe, I think it should be made done in writing. And I don't know who does that, if it's staff or if George doesn't.
Yeah, they'll take whoever does it, they'll figure it out, yeah. Okay. Um, so like I said, we're just going to regular numbers, um. Myself, I, Lisa, I'm, Alisa, I, Michael.
Night.
John.
Hi.
So we can request that extension to July twenty-third. When do you know this will be? Yeah, and I, we just, we found out today, or I found out today, I don't know, maybe George and yesterday, I don't know. That, that the extension was granted, so.
It should be within a meeting.
Yeah. Um.
And will you let us know when you find out?
Yeah.
Even if we don't have a meeting scheduled. Um, and then should we talk about?
Uh, Susan, Susan, sorry, I promised I was speaking and spoken to today. I didn't mean to interrupt. I'm going to send Paul Haverdy an email right now requesting the extension that you just voted, July twenty-eighth. And then he, he can respond in writing.
I can respond right now, Madam Chair, if you would like.
Sure.
So, so Madam Chair, my, my clients are not inclined to grant another extension at this point in time. Um, it's, first of all, it's premature. And, and second of all, the, the ninety-day period that has been bandied about is not in the Housing Appeals Committee decision. It actually comes from your original decision and it has been superseded by the Housing Appeals Committee decision. And I, I think it'd be helpful for me to read the, the relevant, um, portion of the HAC's decision. Any references to the submission of materials to the board, the building commissioner or other municipal officials or offices for their review or approval shall mean submission to the appropriate municipal official with relevant expertise to determine whether the submission is consistent with the final comprehensive permit, such determination not to be unreasonably withheld. Such official may consult with other officials or offices with relevant expertise as they deem necessary or appropriate. In addition, such review shall be made in a reasonably expeditious manner, consistent with the timing for review of comparable submissions for unsubsidized projects. Generally, when I represent boards doing forty B applications, the, the time period for review of final plans is forty-five days. The ninety-day period is already double that and we've already agreed to an extension. It's well beyond what would consider to be, to consider to be a reasonable timeframe. Um, this board isn't actually sitting to approve or disapprove the final plans. That pursuant to the HAC decision, that determination comes from town staff. We have submitted the final plans to the board. We're participating in this process in good faith. Because we believe that the board should be providing feedback to town staff in making its determination. And we're happy to continue to do that. Um, but there's no need for additional extensions at this point in time and we're not going to agree to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, could I ask, uh, can we ask our attorney to respond to that?
Can you tell me, um, Paul, what page you were reading from?
Of course, give me a second.
That was in our decision, right?
The ninety days was in your decision. The, the language I just read is on the top of page forty-two of the Housing Appeals Committee decision.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. All right, Jim, your question?
I just wanted, uh, um.
Oh, uh, George should address that. George, you want to?
Yeah.
George, will you either, can you address what the attorney just?
Uh, yes, yeah, I'm happy to, although my point was to just do what the board asked me to do and send Paul the written request. I didn't want to get into this debate. Um, what he said is correct. The, the HAC superseded the board's ninety-day order on that issue. Uh, the developer did though offer originally when, uh, Leslie got the plans from them earlier this year. They were going under that ninety-day timeframe. So there was no reason to disagree with them that they were going to bind themselves to the original ninety days requested by the board. Um, in terms of you getting, you know, an extension or anything like that, you can request whatever you want. The developer is not under the obligation to provide it. They have agreed so far to June twenty-eighth. So if they're not going to agree, I'm, I'm still happy to send this request in writing if you want me to. But if they're not going to agree to it, I would recommend, you know, trying to get your review, at least to the point that you can, you know, make some type of decision on it by the twenty-eighth. I would, and a, a board member earlier had mentioned the fact about going back to HAC. I think the board, you know, everybody in the community knows the HAC is not really the place that you want to be to try to get things that you want. Because you, you haven't gotten them so far from the HAC, you know, but so that's an option that, that we file some type of motion with HAC. My prediction would be the HAC will rule in favor of the developer on that issue. But if you want us to, to go through that exercise, we can. More, uh, realistically, you're probably going to end up at a point where you're going to have to make a decision one way or another as to the completeness of the plans, uh, what deficiencies are noted, if any. Try to get that decision done by whatever extended deadline the developer has. And then hopefully you're not in an enforcement situation where, you know, what, it's sort of a duel and one side is watching who is going to draw the gun sooner, meaning if you end up disapproving the plans or saying we need more time and we haven't been provided more time, then you're in a situation where you haven't formally acted on them. The developer is going to go to the building commissioner for a building permit. And then you're going to be in a situation where either they're going forward um, and you're in the position of having to seek some type of injunctive relief on issues that you've noted and deficiencies in the plan. Or they file something against you saying, you know, we're entitled to this building permit because we've met all the requirements of the permit as revised by HAC. So the only thing I would recommend strongly from a legal perspective is not to put yourself in that position that you're litigating over, um, uh, details like this in terms of a plan. You, you really want to try to get a substantive review completed to the fullest extent possible. And then if you have legitimate issues of deficiencies in those plans, then you note them. And presumably the building commissioner will, um, agree with your findings as to compliance on these final plans. So, you know, that's kind of a mouthful, but hopefully that answers your question. And, and let me know if you still want me to send the written request.
Madam Chair, can I just, some clarification, um. George, it, I'd seen like the developer's attorney was saying it was kind of a courtesy for our ninety days and maybe we don't have approval rights. And I, I'm just trying to square that, uh, with what you're saying. What are we approving? If, if the decision was, uh, ninety days, it sounds like we really don't have much authority here. Is that right?
Correct. And well, you have what authority is provided under the, um, your conditions of approval as amended by HAC. And HAC did confirm that you have a sort of a, a right of review of conformance with the final plans uh, with the conditions of approval that have been modified by HAC. So you want to try to complete that, uh, to the extent that you can. The, the developer's attorney is, is somewhat correct about kind of characterizing it as a courtesy, as, as you called it, for the ninety days. Because really, the ninety days was superseded in the HAC order. However, the HAC order that Attorney Haverdy just read to you says. However, the HAC order that Attorney Haverdy just read to you says something kind of vague, like reasonably expeditious, or something like that, which arguably would be something like ninety days. So I, I guess the long and the short of it is, as I'm telling you, you know, I, I'm kind of urging the parties to see how much you can get done substantively within the bounds of whatever, you know, confirmed date the developer wants to agree to, which is right now, June twenty eighth. And then see where you're at at that point. If you have real substantive deficiencies, then you'll wanna vote that and note it to the developer, and then we'll, you'll see where you're at at that point.
Okay, John, Madam Chair, through you, George, when it comes time for June twenty eighth, assuming we don't have any more extensions, are we making, are we just voting, or is there going to be a written decision? I, I'm, I haven't seen one of these before, so I'm not sure what sort of procedurally we do on the twenty eighth, the motion, but yes, this complies or no, does not, and do we have to, if we say no, do we have to give reasons? I'm, I'm just, again, curious from procedural standpoint, what, what happens?
Yeah, I think that's helpful um, as a question, and, and it kind of goes back, again, one of your board members talked about customary practice of the board before. You know, I don't know how many of these processes you've gone through. I know you've had other forty B applications where you've had this uh, process go forward, and, and someone has come, you know, confirmed compliance with the final plans. Because I, I think those conditions I had adopted from other um, comprehensive permit decisions that you had rendered in the past. Um, so, you know, that's kind of where you're at. Whatever your customary practices for these, and, and as the developer noted, they were sort of considering it something that gets done by staff, uh, professional staff or anybody needed from a technical compliance standpoint, like your uh, peer review engineer, John Chessia, to, to look at these and guide you on that decision. Having now where you're at, in terms of you kind of conducting a formal review of these plans in the context of these public meetings, you know, my recommendation would be you go ahead with a formal written decision on it. And, and that doesn't mean it has to be a hundred pages long, but something in writing that the board votes. Uh, we, we find compliance, or we note the following deficiencies, and, and here they are. And you, you issue that, if nothing further is extended uh, past the twenty eighth, you issue it by the twenty eighth, and then see where you're at. Because I, I keep assuming that the process that you're all following is that they're seeking this final review for compliance as a precursor to going in and getting a building permit from the building commissioner. So you wanna make sure that, you know, you have some type of articulation uh, when the building commissioner goes through that process, and that it'll be in his hands and his jurisdiction at that point.
Thank you.
John, can I ask something? Would it be possible to, in your report that you sent back to Leslie, know which drawings we're gonna find all the information on?
That's definitely.
For each of those points, like go to landscape plan L two point two for that, to see that change.
In response to Chessia's comments?
Well, yeah, what you sent back to Leslie yesterday, I know, didn't probably have that, I wanted if that can be added, because that'll make our review you know, a lot easier, because there's so many sheets of paper in this packet, it's kind of absurd, so, um.
Yeah.
If you could do that, it would, I think it'd be helpful, because I'm looking for a needle in that instead.
I'll probably need a couple weeks to get that back here, but we'll.
Chop chop.
As soon as I get back.
Send, send John your stuff.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna do that tomorrow.
Because I don't wanna wait two weeks.
Hopefully, it starts as two weeks, what you're proposing. But, uh, and what I'm hearing George say is in the worst case scenario, the developer doesn't have, oh, we go down. We just need to be aware of that.
I think that's correct. Yeah, I mean, that's just reality. I, I'm not saying they, they, I'm not saying they will do that, but that's definitely a possibility.
Okay.
It's a problem.
Well, that's why it's important to have a good faith moving forward, same process. Yes, because we, Hack has issued their decision, and we have to.
It's not a lot of leverage.
We don't have a lot of leverage, all we have is good faith.
Let me, let me just say, when we met on this at executive session to bring the appeal, that was not the view of, of anybody on this board. Or in the meeting that was four nineteen, that was not the view. We didn't just say, oh, well, they're gonna win, so let's, let, let's just not do it. We, suddenly the position, at least with respect to the chair, has changed immensely. And I don't think that reflects the, the board's view.
Okay, I, I wanna clarify two things. Or three more. And, and then we're gonna move on. The executive session where we as a board decided to appeal, a hundred percent I supported that, because I thought we should appeal. When we got the decision back from Hack, that did not go our way, and the Hack decision that came out, this is what we have to work with. We, we did not win that appeal. So reality and impact for the island is to now say, okay, that was the first approach, that would have been the best approach that I would have liked to see us win, or at least the conditions that come, came back. Especially like for me, the, 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 just me personally, the recreation center that's now almost three times what we wanted it to be. I, that's really disappointing to me. I really don't like it. I really wish I could have found a way to make a stronger argument, or an argument that I think that the fact that the Hack decision didn't strike condition fifteen that mentions the thousand square feet, like I would have liked to have won that argument. But I can't, because the Hack decision also says at the end that exhibit three trumps, so there we are. So I am trying to work with this board, work with the developer, to make, for lack of a better analogy, lemonade out of lemons, and do the best for the island that we can do with the decision that came down that has to be followed. We don't have, we can't make new conditions, we can't change those things. All we can do is drill down into this and try to get Dawn's agreement, the developer's buy-in, to what we can make changes to. So to say, and that my opinion has changed about this, it hasn't. I'm just dealing with the reality of the decision that was given to us and the set of circumstances that we have to deal with. This is not how I would have liked to have seen the, the, um, the project come down. I wish Hack hadn't gone to all condos. But this is where we are, and we have to face that and work with it. And that's what we have to work with, and we have a finite time, and exactly why I didn't wanna take this vote is exactly what just happened. Now they're backs up, and they don't wanna give any more extensions.
In all due respect, that's not the timeline. The, the Hack came down with its decision, and we met as a board and unanimously voted to appeal, and you were one of the voting members.
And we didn't.
So you disagreed with the appeal. No, the appeal is in place. Are you, I'm talking about.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I hear what you're saying.
So we clearly, as a board, made that.
Right, sorry, I missed a step, I missed a step.
Clearly.
Right, you're right.
And we clearly has, as a board uh, on four nineteen, made a clear direction that, that we should not withdraw the suit. And I know I'm coming across as obstructionist, and it's really unfortunate for this board that we are in this boat. But I just believe that this, that this was on, and still believe that it was unfairly pulled out from under this board, and we make the decision on this, and we should appeal. And, and if the board decides to, to agree with the select board, that's fine. But no one sat in here and said, well, we're gonna lose, so um, let's just withdraw that appeal, because George should have let us know that, and, and.
Right, and everyone's, that's what we have, I have the next thing to discuss, but we've already the select board has come out and said that it was not handled the right way, the way that we got our notice, and I already told the board that. Um, the select board is willing to have a meeting with us, and you're right, I did skip a step about the, with the withdrawal from the uh, litigation, and that was what the nineteen, four nineteen was about. But again, I'm facing reality that that is the decision of the select board to make, and we need to live with it. They are our winning authority, we take direction from them.
Then, then what is the purpose of this appeals board? What is the purpose of spending a year on this? And, and all, and they jammed this down, the, the if they're the authority on this, they should take this over.
Because that's not what the law says, Jim, it's.
It, it is not what the law says, but I'm.
The law says that it's the zoning board, not the select board that deals.
Exactly, and we are, and then we are party to the suit.
We are, but then they, but we also are, guys, this is, this is way beyond what anyone needs.
But it's an important thing.
Let's, let's discuss it with the select board when we have a meeting with them, okay? So the, um potential, well, potential meetings that we could have with them are either five twenty two next week at four, or five twenty three next week at four. So far, as far, I emailed Levine this morning to see if there are any updates, but so far, three members of the select board can make either one of those, and I can check my phone and see if I.
I associate's five twenty two.
Five twenty two is next one, dude. Yeah, and then we can talk about what we wanna meet next to talk about. And I agree with John Chessia, we should meet and at least talk about landscape plans, the architectural plans, and the community building um, while we wait for, and anything else that we want to about what the plans are delivered tomorrow while we wait for his um, to what, his review, which may, which may come in earlier than two weeks.
I can do either day, I prefer Tuesday, just because I'm traveling on Monday, and if I get.
Yeah, yeah, I prefer Tuesday as well.
Was the twenty fourth a plus for him?
It was, no, the twenty second isn't, twenty third at four P M.
And, and this is just with select board, correct?
Yeah, and, you know, I think that if not everyone can make it, I think it's okay, but I think as long as we have you know, a, a majority of the board would be great to just.
And do we know who the select board members are that are coming?
I don't, but I just I don't, I didn't know.
This could be a new member, right? Yeah.
No, that'll be right, the election is that morning, right?
Yeah.
Well, now, won't be before.
No.
No, it is.
Did you say Tuesday or?
Oh, the elections Monday.
Is it Tuesday?
Tuesday.
It's Tuesday, so.
Okay, so did you all decide on five twenty three at four?
Yeah, right, I will let Levine know.
What is the agenda?
Okay, thank you. So five twenty three, sorry, at four P M is our chosen date. What's the what?
What is the agenda of this meeting? What is the purpose of this meeting?
Um, well, the purpose of this meeting is that we requested to have a meeting with the select board to discuss.
I, I thought that they actually suggested.
They said that would we be, would we want to have a meeting to discuss, and you said yes.
Yes, to discuss what?
To discuss how we got to dismissal.
And maybe, maybe we can discuss, because on my understanding, is those uh, little agreement is a final, hasn't been finalized until we finish our review of the package.
It's, I don't.
I don't know, I, I thought somebody said that, but I could be just.
I think it's just a, akin to a handshake agreement, I don't think it has.
Well, let's only ask them.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's.
I mean, you all have copies of it, right? I mean, it doesn't.
And I think, um, if I hear Mr. Brecher comments last meeting, um, he'd be willing to pursue uh, special counsel with the boards, the select boards approval. Uh. I think we're wasting our time itself, but if you wanna ask.
You can, you can certainly talk down about it when we meet.
Well, uh, I don't know if it needs to be in a form of motion, but I'd like to make a motion to uh, request special counsel uh, subject to the select board's approval.
At the, at the meeting?
At the meeting, yeah.
Oh, okay. Second. Wait, I'm sorry, we're not taking that motion now, he's just saying he'd like to ask.
I think if we do, if we do include that question in our discussion with the selectmen, we will have to, uh, I think they would probably ask if the entire zoning board feels that way. And I would not, my hand's not gonna go up. Just, just for informational purposes, and, and I haven't, I have no idea however anyone else is voting, but I can tell you right now.
So are we voting for that to be something that we talk about next?
Madam Chair, if I can just interject real quick, if you're, if you're talking about potential agenda items for your meeting with the select board, yeah, I think that's fine, but if you're taking motions about special counsel and other things, that's not on your agenda for today.
Sorry, I thought it was just creating that it goes on any agenda.
For the agenda for that meeting.
So you'd like to add that, you wanna add the, to the, to whatever the potential agenda is, to add. Okay, so you, then you seconded that.
To make it a talking, a discussion item next week, yes, that's what I'm going on.
Are, are we? Does that mean we're in favor of? Hiring them?
No, I mean, it's in favor of talking about, talking about.
It's what I voted on, speaking, just to put on, put on the agenda to discuss.
As, as long as that's clear, then I'll support that.
Yeah, I think that's what.
I, I think that topic's gonna come up no matter what, so you might as well, might as well notice.
I just don't want it to be avoided next week. I wanna make sure we at least talk about it. I'd like to hear what everybody has to say, because not, it's.
Yeah. Again, can you have, can that motion um, can, can it come from a full member of the board, so can you?
Sure, I'll make the motion.
So you need to rescind the motion.
And I'll rescind my second. If you need to rescind your first.
I, I will not rescind my motion.
You will not rescind your motion?
Okay.
Uh, otherwise, I'm not a member of this board.
You are a member, but an alternate member has different responsibilities, which I get.
Never been accustomed to this.
It has, before your time, it has, and it's.
That's since my time.
And moved, no, not just since.
I, I think you need to have, I think, and I've asked for, it's, it's in uh, the zoning bylaw, that we have procedures and we have rules, we don't have them. I'm fine with doing this, and if you wanna make that a rule going forward and voting on it, that's fine. But to make ad hoc decisions about what the rules were, and we should bring them back, is just not a right way to run a meeting.
I went the same and looked for the, the rules that were in the, in the um, both in the master laws and in our uh, bylaw, and they don't have any, so I I don't know if they weren't, if they were never filed, or whatever. I think it's just me, but whatever. I think that we could file them, um, and just refer back to the bylaw and master laws, I don't think it needs to be specific rules. But I mean, George, you're here, I, you, do you wanna answer this? Perhaps I'm wrong, but the more that I'm looking at how this board is supposed to be run, it seems to me that it's the, the five full members versus the associate members, which is how they're called in general law, and I think in the bylaw as well, don't don't make motions or vote unless they are brought up to do so in the event of a absence, a vacancy, or whatever, and I just wanna make sure we do this right, because there's been a lot of things swirling around this process, and I don't want to open us up to a higher level of scrutiny, but if, if I'm wrong, and, and associates could make motions, then I think I'm wrong.
Yeah, right, um, no, I, in my opinion, you're, you're not wrong, and, and, you know, when we talk about town council, it's not just me, I'm not I'm not the, um, you know, I don't wear a crown of town council, we're a team of lawyers that specialize in different areas, and uh, the opinion was requested of town council, um, which goes beyond me about if an associate member can make a motion or not. Our opinion is an associate member of a board, unless that associate member has been specifically designated to sit on a particular matter, does not have the um, right to make motions, and then to vote on motions. Having said that, I'm not gonna sit here today and tell you to do something that goes against the customary practice that you've been following. So if your customary practice is contrary to that, that you typically allow uh, motions from associate members, then you go ahead and vote on them. Then I, I see no reason to reset the clock now, although it certainly goes against. Then I I see no reason to reset the clock now, although it certainly goes against what our opinion is on that issue. I mean, you can always cure it too by having a regular member make that motion. I should comment too. I I deal with a lot of zoning boards and and they all have different customary practices, but one customary practice that some boards follow that I don't like and I don't think is legal. Or appropriate is when you sort of have a rolling board and, you know, whoever shows up that night in a quorum and. You know, you kind of pick and choose about who's voting on something. I prefer and the preferred practice. For something high profile like this, like a forty being application that affects. The citizens of your community that you designate whoever's sitting on the thing at the beginning. And then you know who those voting members are and you don't. Sort of leave it a mystery about who's voting and being able to make motions or whatnot. So having said that, that's our formal opinion and associate member does not. Have the right to make a motion to the board. But you know, again, I I don't have the ability to stop you from doing any anything. So if the member insists on doing it. Go ahead and and do it, or if it's against your customary practice, how you normally do it, then go ahead with your customary practice. I'm sure it's not that much of an issue. One, one thing. While I'm talking, I I just want to clarify with you because I tend to prefer to be with clients who want me. You know, I have plenty of clients and I don't have to be somewhere where I'm not wanted. So if you want, if the board wants special counsel for this plan review. And you object to me being here, tell me that. I'm happy to sign off and not be involved in it. If you want special counsel to seek to vacate the dismissal that the select board instructed me to file, that would be a different matter. I've given you my opinion on that. That would specifically need authorization from the select board. But I just want to be clear because I'm I'm unsure. What do you want quote unquote special counsel for? And I see attorney Finn is on. The the participant list on this who represents land council, I I understand, and and his name came up. At the last meeting that that was who. Some of your members wanted to engage in in some manner to get involved in the dismissed litigation. So I I just want to clarify that with you. Are you seeking special counsel to go forward with that process, whether or not you have. Select board authority to do that, or are you talking about the whole process that you don't want town council here involved in your. Proceedings at all, in which case I'm more than happy to sign off right now and advise the town manager that you do not want me present at these meetings anymore.
No, George, it's not, it's nothing personal. I.
I didn't say it's personal. I just want to clarify.
Motion, I just want to explain why I asked for special counsel, not to necessarily overturn. It's the decision of this board whether we we're gonna overturn it, in my view. I think we need special counsel to advise us on this and it's my opinion. That with this specific matter, attorney Pucci has a conflict and cannot. Truly advise this board. Of what their rights are and there 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 is clearly, or not clearly, the law is not clear on this. And and that's why I've asked for special counsel, not.
We've already discussed this and voted. I don't want to go back to this. George has a.
I I just want to know if I'm, if 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 the board objects to me being here, I I just want to sign off from the meeting and not be involved in it. If you want town council to be present, and again, you're free to accept or reject my opinions or guidance as you go along. I, you know, there there is. You're you're free to take the opinion or not, but if you object to my being here.
No, I don't think that's the case. I haven't heard anyone say that, even Jim, you know, who's made the motion for the special counsel. Doesn't, hasn't said that. So your input is valuable. You were with us through the whole process. Um. I, I don't, does anyone feel differently than than that? Okay, so the. If hearing what George is saying. I. I honestly can't remember before this. And I would have to go back and look, but I don't believe. I don't think it hasn't been our custom, but I don't think it also, I don't think it has been our custom. I don't remember. Associate members making a lot of motions for decisions and stuff. We usually defer to. Members to do that, maybe seconds, but I can't recall, but. If it's not prohibited, then you made your motion.
No, to avoid. Decision among the board, I I will rescind this.
I think that's cleaner, just especially because this is.
Okay, so we made the motion. I I.
And use.
I seconded it. Well, no, so now why don't you make it?
Now I'm gonna make the new motion.
And then.
We discuss and explore during the meeting on the twenty third with the select board. The potential of getting our own counsel.
Okay.
It'll second them.
Okay, so Alisa and Lisa and then I'm gonna do a little call. So Alisa. Yeah, I, sorry, Lisa, I, myself, Nay, Michael, Nay, and John.
Point of clarification, this this is for, we're not opining at the meeting, but this topic is going to come up. At the meeting with the select board and so we should have it on the agenda to discuss.
That's what my motion is, to discuss it.
To discuss.
To discuss.
To make sure we discuss it and it doesn't get avoided.
Discuss us hiring separate counsel.
And and.
The concept of it.
And and discussing it with the select board as well, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I, I'm.
Okay, so that's three to two.
Again, I think it's going to come up.
I don't know, I think, could I make a motion that we designate a board?
Sure.
Just to point out, you guys have moved off the agenda item. Designating a board for this or?
Oh, oh, yeah, sorry, but I don't, right, well. Are we off the agenda item because we're still talking about, we're still talking about Surfcy Crossing.
We need to get clarification on who's gonna be voted on this.
Well, or do we want to just put that off till our next meeting and then I think we should put it off till our next meeting and put it on the agenda.
I thought you had concluded your plan review discussion and that you had moved on to the agenda item about scheduling a meeting with the select board. That's what you've been talking about.
We did.
Yeah.
We did. We did.
Oh, well, well, that's.
So then.
Done earlier and then I, we did just vote for it.
No, we didn't. I, the whole point was to finish, my, the whole point was to finish. This Surfcy Crossing and then talk about this, which we did, and so we need to set a new date.
No, I'm sorry, if I wasn't, the designation of the sitting board was something that I wanted to do before we closed out.
Oh, we already closed out.
So we know who can make motions.
So we'll do that, we'll put that on the agenda for next.
First, we have it on the first thing on the agenda, okay.
In a port order, Madam Chair. What is the process to put things on an agenda? You have rejected my my request.
This is just the posting, right?
You have, you have rejected my request to put, excuse me. Excuse me, I have the ticket.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just clarifying. We don't see the posting.
Oh, sorry. Lisa, so you want me to add to designate the sitting board for the Surfcy Crossing plan review?
Yes, okay, thank you.
Um, I assume we all got this.
With the selecting.
No, 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 this is our next meeting.
Okay, got it.
Um, so what is the process for setting?
Yes, since we're talking about, since we're talking about procedure. What is the process for putting something on the agenda?
Um, well, I think it has to be, depending on what it is, if it's an application or something, it has to be filed in a timely manner. In the case of the 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 matter that you want, the motion that you wanted to put forward about. Special counsel again, was it?
The discussion, yes.
Yeah, we've already, we went through it last week. We spent an hour on it. I I did not think that we needed to do that again. We really need to focus on this. And I didn't want to, I didn't think that it was appropriate and I didn't want to discuss it again. We've already voted on it. Same reason I I don't think we need to discuss it with the select board.
Okay.
Because they've already voted on it.
I just want to know going forward, what is the position of the chair when individual members. Ask for idols to be put on the general for for topic of discussion, whatever.
It depends on what the topic of discussion is, is within the chair's purview to set the agenda and that's just, I looked it up, I looked, made sure.
And that's fine, but just to be clear, it can't be used in a manner to shut down. Members of board.
Of course, it wasn't. We already voted on it. We already discussed it. I entered change of order under an emergency order, which frankly was a stretch last week. And we talked about it at nauseam for an hour. I think everybody got to say everything they needed to say, voted at the end. What else there is to say about it?
Well, I should be. I should be offered the opportunity to amend that motion, but I'm not, I'm not going to. At a, at another meeting, I can't, I can't just. Be prohibited from doing that. And that was my attempt. My intent was to ask the board.
Okay, well, we we're not discussing it. It's not on the agenda, so we're not discussing it. So your question about how the agenda is set is answered. Um. You need to set a time, do we for next meeting or do we not because it's not a public hearing?
We don't have to do that right now because it's not a public hearing, okay, but. Uh, I think it would be good for me to touch base with Don Brack and touch base with John Chesky, see when that's gonna happen. Uh, I know you all said in the meantime, you wanted to look at the landscape plans.
Our architectural plans.
And the community. And the community. So we'll. Look at the plus calendar. I think this room works well.
I like this room, actually. I think it's good because it meets. So we'll use, I like this circle too.
Yeah, so we'll use this room again. We'll look at the calendar. We'll send out some dates.
Okay.
Okay, so do you all want to try to do that like in the next two weeks, in the next week?
I think we should try to be next week. Okay, we'll look for some dates and times next week.
Okay.
Right, okay, what are you guys saying? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think the more more times we can meet, the better.
Yeah.
Do we want to just do it the same Thursday?
Yeah. Well, I have to see what the, when they allow, yes.
Sure.
Okay, um, but this seems to be somewhat of a time that works.
Yeah, I'm gonna be interested in the meeting.
Yeah, so if there's, is there anything else for today? Is there anything else for today that, seeing that there isn't, someone make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
And someone seconded, so John needed, Michael seconded, so our role call, Alisa, I, myself, I, Lisa, I, Michael and John, okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Just in time.